Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls, City Council Meeting for Tuesday, October the 17th, to order roll call.
Councilmember Abidi?
Present.
Althoff?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Dalton?
Here.
Mattson?
Yep.
McCusker?
Yeah.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here.
All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the last October City Council meeting for 2017. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by John. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That moves us on to Item 5 this evening, Public Input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak under Public Input this evening?
My name is Babel Gorman. I was at a Public Works meeting here just a minute ago, and it's rather disappointing. When you pick up the paper and you read that the chairperson of that meeting is saying something that's not accurate. A month ago, when I was at the Public Works and I left about my PVC pipe, which will be three months old in one week, Ron Johnson explained to me that I needed to have my engineer draft a proposal. And we've been bouncing this ball around for almost three months now, and I guess it's finally gonna land today. It's nice. It's on the consent agenda. So we had very little discussion of any about any of this, but anyway. So today, while I was at work, I was approached by Mr. Maroni, asking me what I thought about Samantha. I think Samantha's wonderful. She got a building permit for a guy, and maybe a day or day and a half, and Ron Johnson and Maroni bounced that ball around for over a month and got nowhere. Sent the guy stumbling around to different meetings and got nothing accomplished. Samantha took care of it in one day. Pretty simple. She's really, really good. I like her. She gets the job done. But the real reason that I'm here is the myths and the BS and the bunk going around in City Council. And I'm really disappointed in you, especially after a discussion today. So I just jotted a few down. Tom Bergerson claims that the swimming pool is not a part of the Public Works. How ridiculous is that? We all know it is. In fact, he was afraid that the park board was going to take over the pool. So it's a myth, correct? Greg Anderson claims there's never been curb and gutter on Mill and Hoffman Street. I lived in that side of town for 40 years. Believe me, it was there. Mike, you and I discussed it today. We all know it was there, but for some reason, I have an email that says there's no curb up there. Cedar violated the open meeting law. It wasn't a big deal because she was going to come clean, but she still never has. And it's not that big of a deal to me until you tell me that you're going to be transparent and then brush it under the rug. This email that was sent out by Tom Bergerson about Mr. McCusker is not true, and I don't know what difference it makes if somebody tells somebody to do something in the city or suggests it or whatever did happen, but I think the point is, if there's rock on the Third Street Bridge, don't you think he should be responsible for removing it without somebody babysitting him? I do. And if they bring it up, get it done. Isn't that tough? This deal with the Porta-Potties was in the paper. Really, we have homeless people in Cannon Falls. I happen to know who the one is. And yeah, he hangs out down around there, so that's why we have police, but it says that a group had decided that we were gonna close the Porta-Potties early because of the homeless people are destroying them. Well, the group turns out to be him and him. So it's a pretty small group, and I think it was the Chamber that tried to contact this group and explain that they would like to keep them open. And after no avail, I think Mr. McCusker had something to say about it. I don't think it was in order, and I don't think it's out of line. Just seems to be a problem. And last but not least, we spent money to see, to hire an attorney to find out if the roadway west of the winery was actually a roadway. We've used it as a roadway for over 100 years. We even had somebody check with MINDOT. It's a roadway. I don't know why we're all in denial, but that's real simple. And last but not least, I know it was last, but this is big. Mike, you said something to me that I really took offense to. When you're telling me, and it may have been in confidence or whatever, I really don't care, but when you're telling me that someone's losing it, your fellow council member, I don't think you're a doctor, and I don't think you get to decide that. And I wasn't really too upset with that to begin with, but then I heard you approached his granddaughter down at the Super Valley.
And you guys-
And I really don't care, but that's crossing the line.
You guys, the three minutes is up, and you guys can talk about this afterwards.
I'm Mark Nelson, 116 Ridge Brook Drive, and the main reason I am up here today is that there's nothing on the agenda about the motor vehicle. And I know I saw it mentioned in the Beacon at least a month ago or two months ago, and I know that the motor vehicle was taken on just because we could be doing it at a profit, and it was a good service for our local citizens, but definitely not at a loss. Now I understand they've got three people and they're gonna hire another part-time. They get free space, they get free snow plowing, they get free utilities, free everything, and it's just nuts. And why don't you get it on the agenda and do something about it?
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the council under Public Input?
My name's Adam Peters, 700 West State Street. I'm here to adjust the parking in front of the winery. Since they painted them nice white lines, does that really stop people from parking there? We got ends of pickups sticking out of the spot. Who's gonna enforce these parking laws down there? And not to mention, now that we got a brewery coming in and the winery, where is parking gonna be? And why can't we put a tax on the winery and the brewery for the parking lot? They're using a city-owned parking lot that us taxpayers have to pay for, to be redone, reused, and it's not any of people in town that use it. It's being used by bikers, it's being used by tourists that wanna come in here and use our town, which is great for the town, but it's gonna wreck our streets. That whole parking thing is just out of line. You pull out of there, half the time you don't know if you're gonna get hit. I really think that parking needs to go back to horizontal on the winery side, and you know, if they lose some parking space, oh, well, at least it's safe. I mean, you can't see past an extended cab truck that's parked on the corner and you're trying to pull out of there. It's impossible. Something needs to be done with this, not painting lines. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Right, thanks, everybody, for their input. We'll take all this into consideration as we go forward. This time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, we'll read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending October the 13th, 2017. Item B are the meeting minutes for the October 3, 2017, City Council Meeting. Item C is Resolution 2300, approving conditional use permit for Reliable Auto. Item D, Resolution 2301, approving a cooperative snow removal agreement with MINDOT. Item E is hiring unscheduled part-time employee for the ambulance department. And item F is request to use plastic pipe for water main. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
The only thing I'd like to just make a quick comment and not bring it down is I wanna thank the Reliable Auto people for doing this and investing in the town, and I wish you the best, and welcome aboard to our business district.
Yeah, ditto.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Any others? If not, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Morris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That moves us on to Item 7A, which is Resolution 2302, providing for notice of intent for annexation for Ann Simon Ryan Krantz property. Sam?
So the City of Cannon Falls has gotten a request from the property owner and a possible property purchaser for annexation of this property, which is directly behind the implement on 318th Street, I believe. This is simply a request. We bring it to the council for permission to move forward. It will have to go to the Planning Commission and back to the council and everything, so this is just the first step in a slightly long process for them, but-
And if I, for the annexation, they have also approached the township, and the township is okay with this?
Yes, the township, Cannon Falls Township has approved the annexation.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? With that, the Chair will take a motion to approve Resolution 2302 authorizing the request for annexation to proceed to public hearing on November 21st, 2017.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Ken, second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That moves us on to Item 7B, donation of land.
This particular item was discussed at a Public Works Commission meeting, not this last one, but the one, the previous one. There's a parcel, you have the map there in your packet. Scott Rebke at Cannon Valley Trail asked us to bring it forward to council to see if there was an interest in council to accept the donation of this particular property. Question you may have, the property taxes on it currently, and that would be county, school, and city total, it's $104 total. And Mr. Rebke also sent an email earlier this week that he would like to discuss further as far, excuse me, as far as function of that property, but if you're interested in at least proceeding, we can, we have to do that, we have to accept the donation by resolution, so we would bring one forward. We can have a discussion with Mr. Rebke in the meantime and see if there's, it isn't, I know the donor would like to transfer the property, but I don't believe other than that, it's time is of the essence.
I mean, who actually owns the property now? The trail?
No.
No. No, it's a private individual.
And the city owns some right next to it, right?
Right. Around it.
Yeah, three lots, I think.
Yeah.
Right. And that was really, when we discussed it at Public Works, that was what we talked about. I mean, it's not, we don't need it for anything, we don't have a use in mind for it, but there are city-owned parcels that are, you'd have to go through this parcel to get to the closest roadway, so if you wanted to do something with city-owned parcels, this would be a natural complement to what is already city-owned, maybe? And I know the trail talked about this parcel and couldn't come up with it, at the time, couldn't come up with the use that the trail could have for it.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that couldn't change.
Any other discussion on it? Any other thoughts? If not, I'll take a motion to move forward with accepting the donation of the land. I mean, if, I mean, basically it's gonna square that piece off is all it's gonna do, and like you said, we'll allow access to the other three parcels that we have there.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Cedar, second by Ken. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That moves us on to Item 7C, which is to consider LED retrofit project for the city buildings.
Mayor, can I just, excuse me, can I go back to the last item? Just, I just pulled up Mr. Rebke's email.
Mm-hmm.
And that was sent yesterday, and he said the decision, and we can do this in the resolution, but if the decision is made by council to accept, the property owners would like to state the donation would be contingent upon a donation property, donated property to be restricted to recreational use only, which I don't think is a problem, but it's just a clarification.
Okay, and you can put that in the resolution once we-
Yeah, thank you. I apologize.
7C, which is the LED lighting project.
All right. As I've mentioned at a previous council meeting under my reports, that we've been working with a consultant on doing not only changeovers of LED lighting in City Hall, Public Safety Building, Library, and Public Works, and I've got, and we've been working through, Todd Prink is the business owner that initially made the contact with us for discussions with, we have Stuart, or Stuart Dankers here from Sundance Energy, and so we've been working with them, and we've, what we'd like to do is bring forward, at least, we're kinda taking a step, a phased approach on this, we'd like to at least start with a treatment plant. It's got the biggest rate of return on doing the LEDs, primarily because there's a lot of high-pressure sodium wall mount units outside in there. The rate of return or the payback is 1.9 years. Total project cost, about $13,600. The estimated rebate from XL that's on right now until November 1st is a little over $6,000, so the net project cost would be $75, $74. Estimated annual savings in maintenance energy cost is about $3,900. So we'd like to start with this, looking at perhaps bringing energy, an energy audit in with XL on this building, because then they can look at the furnace, which, you know, we've had some issues with, perhaps windows and so forth, but, and then Library, I wanna work with, we wanna work with Nicole on that to make sure we're doing, you know, just not putting a project in without consulting her on it, and then same way with Tim and Todd at the Public Safety Building. So we'll, we'll take those as we come, and then ultimately, we'd like to do the LED streetlights, the 127 globes we own downtown. But I wanna work with the business owners on that, so, because there's a lot of, there has been a lot of contention, I know up on Robert Street in St. Paul with business owners, and the amount of lighting that, because the LED does change the, does change the environment as far as the amount of light, type of light, and so we wanna work with probably the Chamber Board at least on that, or some representation of that, before we go full bore with that or bring something forward to you guys.
Okay, and what part of the budget is coming out of?
This would be under wastewater.
Okay, and funds are there?
But it'll save, over, it'll, two years, it'll pay for itself.
Is this all subject to rebates?
Yeah, and the rebates are available until November 1st.
On all of it for?
They just have to put a purchase, an invoice in before November 1st.
And that would be just for this project?
Yeah.
What happens after the 1st, I mean, with all the rest of them?
Well, there's still, the rebate is less, but if we go through XL or through their energy audit, the rebate actually is 50% less after the 1st of November unless they come up with new programs, but if we work with their folks on the energy audit side of it, the rebate is, there's an additional 30% back to us. So I'd like to take a more thorough review of this building, because there's a lot of complications there, and it may cost, you know, slightly a little more because the rebates aren't quite as much, but I think we can do a better job.
What do you guys think?
Sounds like a no-brainer with the cost savings.
Yeah.
Well, in the LED, you're, you get rid of the ballast, you know, which is great. I mean, you don't have to worry about them, so it is a good deal.
I think it's a pay for themselves in two years. That's usually a good rule of thumb, or fewer.
Okay. Well, with that, there's no further discussion. Chair will take a motion to approve, to authorize Sundance Energy Solutions LLC to proceed with a LED lighting conversion at the wastewater treatment plant for an estimated cost of $13,644.25.
So moved.
And motion by Ken.
Second.
Second by Cedar. Any other discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh.
And we have one that, the ayes have it, at five to one. Okay, that moves us on to reports. Sam? Tom?
The discussion of the Public Works Commission was we'd table for now the downtown Christmas lighting or holiday lighting to get some better ideas, so we just don't jump into something with the wrong light, and then we can figure out where the funding would come from in 2018. Even at this point, if we're to order them, I don't, I'm not sure they'd be here by the time we need them, November 20th, so that's our recommendation, that even if we have to form a small committee and try and figure out what, what light style they like and light, do that.
Well, also too, though, you, we mentioned, if you go to the holiday season, you go to these other towns and you see something, take a, take a few pictures of it so we can look at it too, you know? It's a good thing.
Is that it? Okay. Chief?
Just a reminder for parents, trick or trot will be on the 31st from, Patty just sent me the email-
Three to four.
-last week, and I read it. I believe it was four to five.
Maybe it is.
That, for the businessman, does that sound right?
It's either four or five, three to four or four. I think it is four to five.
Maybe it was fourth, I thought it was four.
I think so.
Because maybe it started at 3:30, but I thought it was, was four to five. I'm sure if you show up at 3:30, there will be businesses handing out treats. Wear whatever costume you like. I typically wear the same one every year. I wash it in between, but, you know, it's always a good time to, to visit with parents and kids. My officers will be down helping everybody cross safely at some of our busy intersections, and we're looking forward to it. That's all I have.
Ron?
I have one item, and that is that Hi-Watt Broadband Communications has submitted a request to transfer their control to Scher's Communication. It will, I spoke with Dan Pecorino, who's the president and CEO, yesterday, and he brought in the applications, and they plan no changes in operations. Scher's gives them, it's a family business, it's not a charter or a media com. It's a, I don't remember how many generation, family business, but they intend to keep the same operations. HBC will keep the same employees, they have the same president, CEO. So functionally, I don't think we'll see anything different, other than I'll be bringing forward after reviewing, having forwarded the request to our cable attorney, Bob Vos with Kenny and Graven, so we'll be bringing something forward to you. I think we have 120 days to respond. Of course, they'd like to do it sooner than later, and basically, if we don't act on it in 120 days, it happens anyway, so we'll, I'll be talking to Bob over the next couple weeks, and sometime soon, we'll be bringing something forward on a transfer of control.
Does this company got other Minnesota stuff or?
I'm not sure.
Okay. No, I was just wondering, that's all.
I think he said they're in Iowa. I better not speak anymore, because I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's okay.
How's that gonna affect, I mean, so that's not gonna affect anything with their rolling out of?
It doesn't affect anything here. In fact, they will have more capital behind them to do expansions quicker and larger expansions, so I think it's probably good news all the way around.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's good.
Mike?
Nothing.
Cedar?
Yes, actually, I would like to clarify and then silence the, the open meeting stuff, because this is not the first time that I've heard it. And so we had a meeting on 6/20, June 20th. There was a Public Works Commission meeting, followed directly by City Council meeting, as we do almost every night of a, of a City Council meeting. During that Public Works Commission meeting, we had a number of folks interested in the tennis court refinishing project. You may remember, it was of great interest to tennis parents and other citizens, and they presented their request for funding and, and their sort of proposals for how to balance out that request among the total cost of the project. And here's what I wrote the next day to every member of the Public Works Commission, the city administrator, the director of Public Works, the mayor, and the city attorney, on June 21st at 10:30 8:00 a.m. "As you know, during yesterday's Public Works Commission meeting, I suggested we take a few moments privately, after the regular meeting had concluded, to arrive at a consensus regarding the amount to recommend that the council allocate to the tennis court project. The commission and city staff talked for a couple minutes, and the result of that conversation was shared during the council meeting that directly followed. Today, we learned upon advice of the city attorney that the small closed meeting I led us into was a technical violation of the open meeting law in Minnesota. That is so because the topic under discussion was not one for which there is a statutory basis for closing a meeting. My intent was to protect the tennis parents from the nuts and bolts of where are we gonna find the $6,000 versus $7,000. I didn't want to sort of minimize their grander concerns with that, but that was an example of good intentions and bad result. I had mistakenly thought that because the commission would announce the results of its discussion right away, that that amount of transparency would negate any problems, but I was wrong, and I'm newer to this job, and I made, I made that mistake. I took full and sole responsibility for the mistake, glad to answer questions. I apologized to the, to my fellow commissioners and said I'll endeavor to never make this mistake again." So that, in, in the spirit of transparency, I do want to acknowledge that I did make that mistake. I have not repeated that error, and I better understand now the requirements of Minnesota's open meeting law. So I thank you for the opportunity. I'll pass.
Thanks, Cedar. John?
Just thanks to Samantha for getting that lot ready up in Sandstone there and pushing that along. We had that brought up, and the other thing was Reliable Auto, which we approved tonight. That's it.
Mr.?
Morris?
Nope.
Ken?
Nothing.
Leroy?
Yeah, if, if you would allow me, Robbie, I'd like to say a few things to just kinda clear the air of what happened about a month ago. If it'd be okay to speak to that, I'd like to have a few minutes to talk about that.
Sure.
Um, the one, this thing has really been tough to- The one, this thing has really been tough to live with and tough to figure out, because I grew up as a farm kid, and I grew up as a Cannon Falls citizen, and I just, I just don't think along the lines that a lot of people do. I don't think of meanness, I don't think of getting back to people or getting back at them. So some of this stuff is pretty bizarre, but I can tell you what has happened, where things are at today with me, and I'm sure everybody's wondering, but I didn't come on this council for the job or anything like that. I came on the council to do good for the city and to make a difference. I think if you were on this council, you probably have got some mental challenges, because it can be very non-rewarding. But if you do care about your city and you care about your kids and your people, I think you can kind of overcome that. But on the other hand, everything has gotten so poisonous and mean around here that, to give you an example, is when we started up the park board, again, I want to thank Robbie for pointing me the head of that, to start that, because I felt there was a very important part that was being neglected. I had a, two meetings down there. The second meeting, the person that represents the city, somebody brought up the word trail, and the person hollered out and said, "We can't say trails." And I said, "Okay," I said, "I heard you." So we went back to talking about things, and somebody brought up trails again, and this person hollers out, "You can't say trails, that ain't proper procedure." And I said, "Well, let you and I meet after the meeting." So with the seven or eight of us on there, we had our discussion, which is a good group of people, and have nothing but the best intent for Cannon Falls. So after the meeting, I met with this person and said, "What, what is going on? What's this all about?" And they said, "Well, he was told to watch me for procedure and to make sure I didn't screw things up." And I said, "Oh, wow, what brought this on now?" "Well, you can't say trails, you're, you're a park board, you can't say trails." And I said, "Well, what should we call them then, sidewalks or what?" And he said, "I don't know, but you can't say trails." And I said, "Well, the public works or administration, or who told you to do this? What is going on here?" And he went on to tell me the people that did it, and, and I said, "Don't do it again, or otherwise, I'm gonna get a hold of Ron and we're gonna have a meeting, and I said, 'You're gonna be censored.'" So anyway, after that meeting, I met with the park board, and we discussed things, and there were so many issues down at John Birch Park, and they were not little issues, they were safety issues that have been neglected. So I took and, park board met about it, pointed them all out to me, and told me that they wanted them discussed right away. And we had other things down there, and I said, "Okay, I'll bring this up to them, but we're gonna talk about the other stuff when we're done with the rest of the parks." So anyway, I got a hold of Tom, and I met him down there, and I showed him everybody's concerns, and they are critical, I can tell you, after being in the contractor all these years. So I just pointed him out, and I said, "This needs to be taken care of, and it should be taken care of right away." And then I just left, and I didn't tell him what to do, I didn't tell him to get it done, I just told him the concerns. Then I stopped home about two o'clock, this is about three hours later, to check my recorder, and somebody's on there and says that I'm supposed to call them right away, and they didn't think, they didn't know who I thought I was, that I was gonna take over the parks in Cannon Falls. And I was, I was quite shocked by the whole thing, so I called this person back, and they started off with me and said that, "You might've got elected, but I don't know who the hell you think you are, that you're gonna take over all the parks in Cannon Falls and do what you want, and that ain't gonna happen." So I said, "Wow, what, what the heck led to this?" And he said, "Well, that's what I was told," and he goes on and on, and, and he tells me that he's contributed money, he's contributed time to John Birch Park, and if I think I'm just gonna take it over, it ain't gonna happen, he ain't gonna let it happen. And I said, "Goodness gracious, I, I don't know what this is about," but I said, "You know, there's seven of us, or eight of us on the park board." And I said, "This, this isn't about Leroy, this is about the park board." And he said, "Well, that ain't what I was told." And I said, "Well, who, who told you this stuff? How did this come about?" And he said, "Well, Tom Burges stopped my office about eleven-thirty." And I said, "Goodness gracious." So anyway, I took and left it alone between the, I couldn't say trails, or the other people couldn't say trails, and this episode. So I, I took and, the next meeting, I set it up and told both these people, their coaches, to please come to the park board meeting, so you can meet everybody and know that we have the best interest of Cannon Falls and you people, and that we want you to keep us informed. So we had the meeting, and they came, and they left, and they felt more comfortable. That's just one instance, and then last spring, I had two emergency plumbing calls for leaks that involved the city, and when I called, I realized that I better call Tom, because I don't need to stir something up, and, but I didn't get an answer. So my next thing is, is my friend Dave Pagel's on there, I just called up Dave, told him my situation, and I said, "I don't care what you gotta do, but I gotta get this taken care of, because I need a water main shut off someplace." And he said, "Well, I'll take care of it." He said, "I gotta make some calls, see who's on duty and stuff." But I brought up the fact that I didn't get the calls and stuff, and I didn't get the answer, what I usually don't, from both Tom and Ron. So my, my thing has come down to is, I'm left with Dave Pagel. So I always call Dave Pagel, and I always tell him to make sure to include Tom, and tell Tom. I don't tell them what to do, I just tell them about what people call me about. Now, the instance with the porta-potties, the chamber commerce call me, the trail committee calls me, and want to know if we can discuss this more, they didn't like the way we did it. And I said, "Oh, my goodness," I said, "I'd rather you call directly down to City Hall or to Tom. That just works out better, because for some reason, somebody thinks I got some kind of an agenda." So anyway, they said that they don't want to deal with them. They said that they don't feel like they're treated right and stuff at times, and I said, "Well, you don't know my end of it, so I'd rather you just take care of this personally." And then they said to me that you're the council member, and you represent us, so you take care of it. So then I, I call and didn't get Tom again, so I called Dave Pagel and said, "Tell Tom this is what they're saying to me." And the thing with the bridge situation over there, about a month ago, I was going across the bridge one day, and goodness gracious, somebody must've been hauling stones of gravel, and they spilled gravel all the way from the egg partners over there, all the way up Third Street to the top of the hill and around the corner. And they didn't just spill a little bit, they spilled it all over. So the problem, my first reaction was, "Holy buckets, I gotta get a hold of Public Works about this." And then my next reaction was, "Oh, boy, no, they'll, they'll think I'm doing something, or I'm out to get somebody or something." So just, just leave it alone. So I waited for over a month, and the cars threw the stones off, and, except for on the bridge, and I was really quite surprised that not Public Works or police or somebody responded to it. But I, I told myself that I, I gotta back off, I can't be an involved, keep being involved in this kind of things, and yet I feel that being on this council, I should be involved. And then I had an incident last spring where contractor calls me up and says, "Hey, Leroy, you gotta get over here and check this out, there's something going on." And I said, "Wow," I said, "You, you get a hold of Public Works or call down to Ron Johnson?" I said, "Leave me out of this now." And then they gave me the big speech too, that they ain't gonna talk to them too, and damn it, you're on the council, so you take care of this, I'm not doing it. So then I, I left it alone for a few hours, went out, did calls, and I realized that, oh, boy, I can't, I can't just leave this go. So what the person was complaining about, they were doing some digging, and there was an exposed sewer pipe going down through the woods. So I walked over there, went over there, and just went down in there to see what was going on. And I checked it all over, and goodness gracious, there was an exposed sewer pipe, open for about a foot and completely exposed. Now, when I did bring it up to the city, they said, "What's the big deal, or what does it hurt?" Well, I said, "The one thing it hurts is if you get a woodchuck to decide to chew a hole in that thing, you're gonna lose a hundred-and-twenty houses over here, and gonna have a hell of a mess." But anyway, in the meantime, when I looked this over, I walked down through there to see, because I had put these mains in in nineteen sixty-eight. So I decided to walk down through there and just go, kind of go through the old memory lane of when I did that job. When I get down in there, we have a dumping station for our storm sewers, and I get down in there, and holy buckets, that thing hasn't been maintained for years, and it had washed out towards the river. And the overflow pipe that goes to the secondary one was completely blocked off, so that's why it overflowed to the river and washed that out. And there's trees growing up all over inside this pond, what there shouldn't be. So I got a hold of the city and told them what happened, and then I got a report back that, from one of our people, that, "There I go again, stirring things up, causing trouble." Well, I get calls from these people, and I can't, if I'm supposed to disrespect them and not follow up, I can't do it. The other issue I had was personnel got a hold of me last spring about their issues, and I turned around and I thanked them for telling me that, I told them I would address it for them, and I walked back in the house to do some stuff, and I got thinking, "Oh, boy, I, I don't know how I'm gonna deal with this." And so a little light bulb went off, and I said to myself, "You know what? Mike Dalton's on the Personnel Committee, and this is a personnel issue, and I really don't want to deal with this." So I took and called Mike, and I said, I told Mike my situation, that I didn't want to deal with it, I figured I'd be demonized if I brought it up, and he said he would take care of it. So I called the person back and asked them to go see Mike, and to take care of it with him, because he's part of the Personnel Committee. So the whole idea that I don't know procedure up here, and I'm setting things up, I just, it's just bizarre to me. I'm not dealing, used to dealing with people who have this kind of anger and stuff. So what I have done is, I, I wanted to resign right after the meeting, I wrote the letter, and my wife went and wrote it out, said that I'm not resigning. But I, so I, I promised her I'd give it at least two to three weeks to think about it, work it out, something different. But I will tell you that I feel embarrassed down here, because I have nothing but good intentions for the city, but I bring the worst out of people, and I don't know why I do that. I went to one Public Works meeting one time on some stuff that I was supposed to address, and I got told right off the bat that just wanted me to know that they totally disagree with me and agree with me on very few things, and that I could have a couple of minutes to speak, but more likely, there was nothing gonna be done, because they don't agree with me. So I, I just sat there and said, "Well, I, I thought to myself, I like you too, thanks for saying that." So that was, that was another bizarre thing to me. So anyway, it's, it's gotten to the point where I really do, I can't believe it got to this point, but I do feel threatened, I do feel harassed. And I did talk to Roger Knutson today, and am gonna have a meeting with him. My biggest concern is, is that I feel threatened to the point that I'm almost afraid that if, if I drive by our crew doing a project, and I stop and say hi to them, and somebody sees me there, they're gonna have me arrested for talking to our crew out of place, or not doing the right thing, or something. So it's really gotten so bizarre for me. I get an awful lot of support from people in Cannon, and they, I guess, the one meeting we had, one of the council members told me that I'm a divisive person, I have a divisive family, you have divisive friends, and that's why you draw divisive people in. Well, I, I just walked out of there, and I was totally overwhelmed. I, I have, I guess, never looked at my life that way, and I think we can all do some reevaluation. But in closing, I will tell you that I'm gonna meet with Roger to get my legal rights and stuff. And I would just like to close with, my wife always liked Anna Green Gables, and the only thing I got out of it is when she said, "The truth will set you free." I try to live my life that way. I also think about when Rodney King was getting his shit beat on him in California out there, and he laid on the ground and said, "Can't we just all get along?" And then I think about Saturday Night Live with Al Franken, and I think about, you know, if I had a blue sweater on, it'd be more fitting, but I'm good enough, and I'm smart enough, and by golly, people just like me. But this is where I'm at right now with, I need to get some input from an attorney, and if things can't simmer down and they can't get better, and I'm more likely gonna have to resign, but I also am probably gonna do something legally because of all harassment. So thank you, Robbie, for letting me speak, because I was very concerned that, I wanted to put all this out there, so everybody knows where things are at, and I was afraid somebody was gonna censor me again and not let me speak. So thank you, really appreciate it.
You're welcome, Leroy, and we don't want you to resign, we want you to stay on the council, and we need to all work together to, for the good of the city. We're here for the city, not for our own individual projects or, or ways of thinking, because there's six of you that vote, and so we need to go from there. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn the council meeting, and we will take a five-minute break, and then we will start our work session.
Motion adjourned.
Motion. Second by Mike. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.